I want to explain, take ten seconds. This for this, this for this is all discussion.
On Elder Road in Mishawaka. Very nice. I'd like to stay there. If they had an old people's home when I get old, that's where I want to be.
Individual T V's, right?
Yes, yes.
All control.
I think that's a moneymaker. Mark my words. What we need to do is we need to set up.
Overlooking the lot.
I call it also. That's politically incorrect.
Senior citizen residence.
Do we need a motion to continue residence? Indefinitely.
Just locate, co-locate nearby.
I would love to spend my golden years at a dog care facility.
Actually, what might be a better deal would be easily get done with behalf of half of the A bus. The care, not the care facilities, the senior residences.
Senior residents.
And would say, if you want to come volunteer, our bus will pick you up. And you can spend more hours here. But you could go to like a different place every day.
Yeah. That's a practical solution.
If you look at very practical solutions, is that your goal?
Yes.
You want to invest in one, is that what?
Do you want to be my campaign manager for the?
Appreciate it. Derek.
You're going to get in trouble.
Seven to one.
What is that?
It's out.
Oh, is it?
Yeah, okay, that's.
Hey, nothing ventured.
I just think.
That'll make everybody mad.
A wing for, what do you call, senior citizens.
Good evening. Monday's, October 26, 2015, council meeting is in session. Our invocation will be by Dr. Fred Furley.
I'd like to paraphrase Abraham Lincoln's second inaugural address. With malice towards none, with charity for all, with firmness in the right as God gives us to see the right, let us strive to finish the work we are in, to bind up our city's wounds, and to cherish our lasting peace among us. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
How's the other guy? Go, Catherine, in the saddle.
Mr. Wardy, would you please do the roll?
Mr. President, Mr. Henry Davis.
Henry's here.
Come in.
Mrs. Shea.
I am here.
Dr. Furley.
Here.
Dr. Varner.
Present.
Mr. Oliver Davis. Vice President Dieter.
Vice President George Washington, I am present.
Mr. Furley.
Here.
Councilmember White is excused. President Scott.
Present.
Present. We have seven presidents.
Thank you. Report Subcommittee amendments, please.
To the common council of the city of South Bend, the Subcommittee has inspected the minutes of the October 12, 2015, meeting of the council and found them to be correct. Therefore, we recommend the same be approved. Signed, Tim Scott, David Varner.
Want you to approve? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Nay. Thank you. We have a few issues under special business. First of all, I'd like to welcome Boy Scout Troop 453, the third church. If you all will perform. And we have, we will entertain a motion on two special reports, just for the audience. These are within council, internal business. There is no public discussion on these two motions. I'll entertain motion now.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to move that the common council act to continue our relationship with the legal department and the legal bodies which are pursuing our options on the tapes matter.
Second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. All opposed?
Nay.
Want to do a roll call real quick, Mr. Wardy?
Mr. Henry Davis.
Aye.
Mrs. Shea.
Aye.
Dr. Furley.
Nay.
Dr. Varner.
Aye.
Mr. Oliver's name. Vice President Dieter.
Aye.
Mr. Furley.
Nay.
Aye. Okay. The vote was one.
Five, two, three, four.
Five to two.
All right, thank you, sir. So entertain another motion on special reports.
I would like to make a motion, but I'll have first our council attorney explain to the rest of the council members who may not know yet.
At the October 12 meeting, the South Bend Common Council passed by a vote of eight to one, bill number 63-15, that would amend the South Bend City Code with regard to gun regulations. Excuse me, noise regulations. The mayor, the mayor had 10 days to either approve or disapprove that bill and report to the office of the city clerk. Mr. Wardy has advised us that he has gotten nothing from the mayor. Therefore, the council is required under state law to take action at their next regular meeting if you wish to override the mayor's pocket veto.
I make a motion to override the mayor's pocket veto.
On bill 63-15.
On bill 63-15. Okay, all in favor? Aye. All opposed?
Nay.
Think we have five to?
Voice vote.
Same vote as before. Roll call, Mr. Wardy.
If I could just state for the record that in order to override the mayor's veto, it's two-thirds of the assembly, so six votes would be required to override.
Okay. We'll start with Mr. Henry Davis again. Vote to override.
Aye.
Mrs. Shea.
Aye.
Dr. Furley.
Nay.
Dr. Varner.
Aye.
Vice President Dieter.
Aye.
Mr. Furley.
Nay.
And President Scott.
Aye.
The vote is five to two. The veto is not overridden.
Okay. Thank you. Can I entertain a motion on 1594? To continue indefinitely on behalf of the petitioner?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Okay, thank you. Tonight, we will not have a report from city offices, but James Mueller, representing the city, is in the audience. Good evening, James. And now, I entertain a motion to resolve in committee of the whole.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. All opposed? All right. Committee of the whole is now in session. Clerk Wardy, let's go with 3615.
Public hearing on a bill amending the zoning ordinance for property located at 2906, 2910, and 2920 Mishawaka Avenue, South Bend, Indiana, 46615, Councilmanic District Three, in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
Committee met earlier, we did not have a form being sent to the council with no recommendation. Report from area plan, and then the petitioner can stand up, line, and be ready to go.
Good evening, my name is Matthew Chapman of the Area Plan Commission with offices located on the 11th floor of this building. This is the former Mishawaka store on the 2900 block of Mishawaka Avenue. The petitioner is requesting a zone change from MU Mixed Use District to CB Community Business District to allow for veterinary clinic. To the north across Mishawaka Avenue are various commercial storefronts, Zoned MU Mixed Use District. To the east is a bank, Zoned MU Mixed Use District. To the south are single-family homes, Zoned SF2 Single Family and Two Family District. And to the west is a hair salon, Zoned Mixed Use District. This is an aerial image of the site. This is a view from the north looking south. This is a view looking west down Mishawaka Avenue. This is looking back east of the parking lot. You'll notice that there is an alley separating the three lots that make up the site. This is a view of the parking lot. As I said, the site is composed of three lots with the north-south alley separating the middle lot from the lot in the east. The petitioner has requested to vacate the alley, which would allow for additional parking as well as additional landscaping to be placed along Mishawaka Avenue. If alley is vacated, it will allow the petitioner onsite parking, however, as the lot line is currently drawn, there is no room for onsite parking, and so the parking lot in the east serves as technically offsite parking. The city engineer recommends that if the alley is vacated, that the petitioner dedicates attorney easement on the south portion of the alley so that utility vehicles will be able to turn onto the alley for trash removal, snow removal, things of that nature. And the Area Plan Commission sent this to you with a favorable recommendation, and at this time I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Right, thank you. Any questions for area plan? All right, thank you.
Hi, my name is Steve Debold, I'm with Chester Incorporated, located at 555 East 46th Drive, Valbraize, Indiana, representing petitioner tonight. As the planner has stated, we are remodeling the existing building for a vet clinic with in-house patient boarding. Our plans are to vacate the alley to accommodate additional parking on the parcel. The other areas that we're asking for is to eliminate the planting requirement, foundation planting requirement along the north, south, and east side of the building, and to reduction in parking from required 39 to zero. If any question, if there's any question, I'd be happy to answer it.
Any questions?
Just a statement? That'll be under council.
We'll get to that, okay? All right, thank you. You'd like to give a brief, real brief synopsis, or are you good? Step right up. Just need your name and address, and just a very brief synopsis.
Jeff, 66500 Oak Road, Lakeville, Indiana. I own Lakeville Veterinary Clinic, and I'm a partner of Family Pet Health Center. Family Pet Health Center is trying to buy this building. Our current facility is about 3,000 square feet, and is woefully inadequate for what we're trying to do as far as quality medicine. This new facility would allow us an amazing expansion. It would allow us to do some things that we simply haven't been able to do in our current location, so we would certainly ask for a favorable allowance. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, sir. Anyone like to speak in favor of this? Or opposition? Councilmembers' comments? Yes, ma'am.
I, as the representative of the 3rd district, I just want to thank you both for the investment in the 3rd district and on Mishawaka Avenue.
Motion to send 3615 to the full council favor, please.
Second. No motion and a second, all in twite. Aye. And the opposition? All right, thank you. Clerk John Wardy, let's go to 3715, please.
Public hearing on a bill amending the zoning ordinance and requesting a special exception for property located at 706 Eddie Street and 1111 Bissel, Councilmanic District Four, in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
Make a motion to a substitute version? So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, thank you. We also met earlier today, and this being sent with no recommendation to the full council.
Councilmember Dieter, at the zoning and annexation committee, it was discussed with regard to the concerns that were raised by several of the council members. The petitioner has agreed to have the following words struck from Section 2, food, sales, and service, and we would need a motion to the substitute bill to accept that.
So moved.
Second.
You have a motion and a second, all in favor? Aye. Any opposition? Thank you. Go ahead.
This is the northeast corner of Eddie and Bissel Streets. It's a single-family home that has been operating as a church with an accessory parking lot. The petitioner is requesting a zone change from SF2 Single Family and Two Family District to Office Buffer District, and seeking a special exception for personal services. Personal services would constitute things like a barber shop or hair salon. As you see from the zoning map, the property is surrounded on four sides by single-family homes, Zoned SF2 Single Family and Two Family District. This is a view of the home directly on the corner, and you see the parking lot on the right. This is a view of the parking lot. The parking lot is surrounded by a six-foot-high privacy fence, as well as some landscaping. The petitioner would be required to install some additional landscaping as well. This is a view looking north on Eddie Street. And this is a view looking south. Straightforward site plan, parking lot on the east with a six-foot-high screening fence, and the existing building on the west. I would like to note that Area Plan Commission did receive a letter of support from the Northeast Neighborhood Revitalization Organization. They are in favor of this petition. And the Area Plan Commission also sent this to you favorably, and at this time I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, any questions of area plan? I have a quick question. Since that was operating as a church, was that in?
Technically.
Illegally?
No, churches and religious uses are permitted within residential districts.
Okay, right.
Good evening, my name is Ann Hayes, I'm with Five Corners LLC, located at 814 Marietta Street in South Bend. As Matthew mentioned, we purchased this property that until recently has been used as a church, and it's accompanying parking lot. It's currently Zoned SF2. We would like to use this building to rent office space, and therefore need it to be rezoned, and we are looking to have it rezoned as Office Buffer. In order to increase the marketability of the building, we are also seeking one special exception, which would be for personal services, under which we envision a barber shop or beauty salon. Members of our staff have been in touch with local homeowners in the surrounding area, as well as Dr. Furley, and also, as mentioned, with Marco Mariani and Tim Sexton, who all support our plan. Thank you.
Okay, any questions on the petitioner? Who in the neighborhood did you talk to?
There's four, actually, owner-occupied homeowners that are in this adjacent area. Would you like their names that we spoke to?
No, just on Bissel, or Eddie, or?
Both. So the neighbor right next door, just north of us on Eddie, and then the other two would be on Bissel.
Okay, good, thank you. All right. Anyone like to speak in favor of this? Or opposition? Seen none counsel, recommendation?
Send 3715 to full council favor, please.
The substitute bill is amended.
Substitution.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the substitute bill as amended. All in favor of that? Aye. Any opposition to that? Thank you. Clerk John Wardy, let's go to 3815.
Public hearing on a bill amending the zoning ordinance for property located at the 600 block of North Hickory Road and the 3500 block of East McKinley Avenue, South Bend, Indiana, Councilmanic District Four, in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
Dr. Varner.
Yes, there was not a oral present, so there's no recommendation.
All right, thank you. Go ahead.
Okay, you are now looking at a vacant lot on the, just to the west of the former target site at the corner of Hickory and McKinley, as well as a small parking lot on Hickory just north of the Dollar General Store. The site is broken up into parcels, parcel one and parcel two. Parcel one is the smaller parcel on the east, in which case the petitioner is requesting a zone change from PUD to GB, General Business District. Parcel two is the larger parcel on the west, in which case the petitioner is requesting a zone change from PUD Planned Unit Development District, to Planned Unit Development District, in order to make some modifications to what their uses are. Site is primarily bordered by single-family homes on the northwest and south. The Elks Lodge is on the east, Zoned CB Community Business District, and the South Bend Self Storage is now in the former target site. This is a view of both sites, the parking lot southeast is occupied currently by new vehicles for one of the local car dealerships, and the large vacant parcel on the west. This is a view of parcel one. You can see where the change in pavement is. This is looking north on Hickory. This is a view of that same site from the rear. This is a view looking north into the larger parcel. The tree line there is essentially where the outdoor storage, it's a good indicator of where outdoor storage is permitted. So when you look at this cropping of large shrubs, that's kind of a good visual to see where the outdoor storage would be, and I'll show that here on this slide. So on the large parcel on the west, PUD will allow for uses, allow within both SF1 and SF2 Single Family Districts, MF2 Multi-Family District, LB Local Business, CB Community Business, and that will be for this entire parcel here. As you move into the orange, you will also be, the petitioner will also be allowed all uses within the GB, General Business District, and then as you move into the red, the petitioner will also be allowed outdoor storage, as well as the GB. Parcel one here, that will only be allowed uses under GB, General Business District. Area Plan Commission sends this to you with a favorable recommendation, and I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Any questions of area plan? None. Mr. Dance.
Mike Dance from Dance Harners, located at 1643 Commerce Drive here in South Bend. As Matthew had said, what we're doing is just adding GB uses to the originally approved PUD for McKinley site. He gave a good presentation. The only difference here is what's happening is we're limiting the area where they could do outside storage on this PUD, and it pretty much matches where council approved maybe the South Bend Storage LLC, which is right next door to this particular piece of property. There'll be 200 foot fur for that outside storage area, plus we'll have to do landscaping and landscaping. So that mainly will be the same thing. All we're doing on this piece of property that's over on Hickory, where they're already storing cars right now, I think it's for gates, what we're doing is changing design there from PUD to GB, which would allow for that use, but what will happen is that that parcel will now have to broaden its compliance with the zoning, which means it'll be landscaping and screening to buffer that site from residential to the north. If you have any questions for me, I'd be glad to.
Thank you. Any questions, Mr. Dance? Yes, ma'am.
Can we, to the clerk, the microphone, is it on at the podium?
Just needs to talk up.
Yeah. Doesn't work real well, though.
It doesn't. Thank you. No, I have no questions with the presentation.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone from the public like to speak in favor or opposition? Seen none counsel, recommendation?
Motion to send to the full council favor, please.
Second.
No motion. Second, all in favor? Aye. Any opposition? Thank you, Clerk John Wardy. 3915, sir.
Public hearing on a bill amending the zoning ordinance for property located at 635 South Lafayette Boulevard, South Bend, Indiana, Councilmanic District Number Six, in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
Thank you. Committee met, discussed both the pros and the cons of this, and we didn't have a recommendation because we didn't have a form. Go ahead.
Are you able to hear me okay through the microphone? Should I hold it up?
Just enunciate.
Hold it up.
There you go.
This is the former Studebaker Assembly Plant on Lafayette. The petitioner is requesting a zone change from GI, General Industrial District, to PUD, Planned Unit Development District. To the north across the railroad tracks is the former Union Station, which is now a software, actually, I'm not entirely sure what they do there, but it is some sort of tech firm. To the east across Lafayette are industrial and office uses, Zoned LI, Light Industrial District. To the south is the St. Joseph County Correctional Facility, and to the west is the City Services This is a view of the site from the south, and this is a view from the north looking You'll see the part of the correctional facility there on the left. Site is a 13.2 acre site with over 750,000 square feet of existing structures. The PUD would allow for uses that would fall under educational, entertainment, lodging, industrial, office, personal services, residential, retail, restaurant, manufacturing, warehousing, and several others. Adult businesses, however, would be prohibited. I will leave majority of this presentation to Mike Dance, he will give you a better explanation of what they're planning to do there, but I would also like to note that the Area Plan Commission did receive a letter of support from the historic Planning Commission of St. Joseph County, and the Area Plan Commission also sends this to you favorably.
Great, thank you, sir. Any questions of area plan? Yes, ma'am.
Just a quick question, do you know where we are with the environmental remediation issues?
I'm not aware of where we are with that process.
I think Brock may have.
Brock's the Department of Community Investment, 14th floor of this building. We are actually entering the Phase One, Phase Two negotiations with Brownsfield's, Indiana Brownsfield's, they've been submitted to the state. So as redevelopment is concerned, we believe that we've done all the necessary cleanup throughout the entire building and the entire site. Indiana Brownsfield's will let us know if they agree with that conclusion, but Weaver Boos will be handling any discussions with Brownsfield's on behalf of redevelopment.
Okay, so the lead paint and all of those things?
It's all completed. All the remediation, all the removal of lead-based paint, PCB, asbestos, groundwater testing's been done, all the soil samples have been done, so it's now just working with the state, getting some form of a comfort letter.
And last question, have we received federal grants for all that work?
No, no. I mean, the Redevelopment Commission approved an environmental indemnity agreement where most of that work has been covered under remediation of the site.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Dance.
Mike Dance from Dance Harners, located at 1643 Commerce Drive, it's up and, representing the petitioner. And Matthew had mentioned, what we're asking to do here is to rezone this entire site from the General Industrial District to the PUD District, because what they're trying to do is renovate this entire structure, all 750,000 square feet, plus potentially add some additions to the existing buildings that are there. It'll allow for uses the range from residential all the way to industrial users, with some retail space, educational space, and actually incubator space for redevelopment. What we have to do, though, per the city requirements, is that because that's not all allowed under a single zoning classification, we have to come through the PUD requirements for that. We accept the PUD standards for setbacks landscaping for this entire site, as well as parking ratios that would be required in the type of use that will go into the buildings. This most likely will be phased in. What Matthew had shown you on our preliminary site plan are the existing buildings, which are Building 84, 113, and 112, the old Studebaker buildings. And what we are showing on the south side of the site is, right now, a two-phase development portion of the project, which will even be a surface parking lot for approximately 350 cars, and at some point in time will end up happening is that surface parking lot will be rebuilt into a fivestructure parking lot. into a five-structure parking garage. Because of the amount of square footage that this PUD has, as that develops, they'll be required to have more and more parking per the city requirements. So it will end up going probably from 350 spaces for the development up to, in the era of 1,600. This development will actually go in phases, and so there'll probably be maybe several years for us to get out to full build-out. If you have any questions for me, I'd be glad to answer them.
Any questions of Mr. Dance? Great. Thank you, sir. Anyone like to speak in favor or opposition to this project? Seeing none, council recommendation?
Send favorably.
Second.
Motion to second. All in favor?
Aye.
And the opposition? Thank you. Let's go to sixty-seven fifteen.
Public hearing on a bill of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending various sections of Chapter Six, Articles One, Two, Four, Six, Seven, and Eleven of the South Bend Municipal Code addressing minimum permit fees and service charges of the building department.
Dr. Varna, what'd you do in your committee today?
No. We had a committee meeting this afternoon, and this, without a quorum, this comes without a recommendation.
Go ahead, Chuck.
Good evening, council members. First and foremost, I'd like to apologize for my no-show at the committee this afternoon. I had a screw loose this afternoon. It's been one of those days. The common council recently approved a budget for the building department that included a proposed fee increase as part of our revenue. That increase is a combination of changing the minimum permit fee amount from $30 to $40, and the contractor registration fee from $100 to $125 annual. There are no other proposed changes in the fee structure at this time. Since 2012, there's been a 24% increase in expenses in the building department on a per-permit fee basis. And although we show surplus when you consider all permanent revenue, the minimum permit fee revenue currently does not cover our cost on a permanent basis. In other words, we make money on all of the permits when you combine all revenue, but we actually lose money when we do an inspection on a minimum fee permit. I want to make sure that we don't have a shortfall if activity begins to die down. This increase is simply a tweak to the rest of the permit fee structure, which, by the way, is operating exactly as planned. Now, the obvious question is, can't we just do a larger increase, and so we don't have to keep coming back every couple of years for additional increases? The simple truth is, no. Fact: 27% of all permits are minimum fee permits. Fact: 24% of minimum fee permits, approximately 6% of all permits, are for utility reconnects. Fact: Most of the utility reconnects take place from November through February and are by people in need. Now, as government officials, it's our duty to make sure that the residents of this community get good value from the government. Can we make the minimum fee $100 or $500? Sure. But that's probably out of the reach for the family of five that is struggling to keep the heat on in the middle of winter. I think this increase is a fair compromise between covering expenses and making permits still affordable. I ask for your timely passage of this fee increase. We have to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you. Any questions? All right. Thank you, sir. Anyone like to speak in favor or opposition to this? Seeing none, council?
Favorable recommendation?
Second.
Motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
And the opposition? Thank you. John Wardy, sixty-six fifteen.
Public hearing on a bill of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, approving a resolution of the South Bend Economic Development Commission and establishing an economic development target area, the former Chase Tower and adjacent parking lot.
Kevin.
Community investment met today, and we send this forward favorably.
Thank you, sir. Go ahead, Brock.
Good evening, council members. Brock Z, 14th floor of this building, Department of Community Investment. Before you is a recommendation from the Economic Development Commission recommending the council pass ordinance, designating the location, which is known as Chase Tower, as an economic development target area. It will lead into the tax payment that's later on in the council agenda tonight, and will allow for passage of that if this is approved. This is a requirement anytime you have a mixed-use project in the CBD. And so essentially, the economic development target area says that the property is outside normal development due to obsolescence in exhaust, plumbing, HVAC, parking, all kinds of other elevators deteriorations to the building. And so it needs the designation to be able to have a residential tax payment passed. And so that's what's before you. So the final decision would be council's whether or not to target that, and then that would allow for the residential tax payment to come forward. Answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you.
Any questions from the council?
None. Present it with a short synopsis, or is that...
I'm actually the stand.
Okay. That'll work. Anyone like to speak in favor or opposition to this? Sixty-six fifteen. Seeing none of that, council.
Favorable recommendation?
Second.
Motion to second. All in favor?
Aye.
And the opposition? Thank you. Make a motion to rise and report.
Some moved to second.
Back to the hall. All in favor?
Aye.
Full council is now back in session. Mr. Wardy, would you give third reading to thirty-six fifteen, please?
Third reading on a bill amending the zoning ordinance for property located at 2906, 2910, and 2920, Mishawaka Avenue, South Bend, Indiana, 46615, Councilmanic District Three in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
Motion to approve?
Yes.
Pass. Second.
Mr. Wardy.
Mrs. Shea.
Aye.
Dr. Furlic.
Aye.
Dr. Varna.
Aye.
Vice President Dieter.
Aye.
Mr. Furlic.
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis.
Aye.
And President Tim Scott.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Kathy, thirty-seven fifteen, do we need to amend this committee? Okay. John Wardy, thirty-seven fifteen, please.
Third reading on a bill amending the zoning ordinance and requesting a special exception for property located at 706 Eddie Street and 1111 Bissell, Councilmanic District Four in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
Make a motion to amend that was in the committee in the hall.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you.
Make a motion for the passage as amended.
Second.
Mr. Wardy.
Dr. Furlic.
Aye.
Dr. Varna.
Aye.
Vice President Dieter.
Aye.
Mr. Furlic.
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis.
Aye.
Mrs. Shea.
Aye.
President Tim Scott.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Thank you. Thirty-eight fifteen.
Third reading on a bill amending the zoning ordinance for property located at the 600 block of North Hickory Road and the 3500 block of East McKinley Avenue, South Bend, Indiana, Councilmanic District Four in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
Move to the passage of thirty-eight fifteen.
Second. Mr. Wardy.
Dr. Varna.
Aye.
Mr. Oliver, sorry, Vice President Dieter.
Aye.
Mr. Furlic.
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis.
Aye.
Mrs. Shea.
Aye.
Dr. Furlic.
Aye.
President Tim Scott.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Thirty-nine fifteen.
Third reading on a bill amending the zoning ordinance for property located at 635 South Lafayette Boulevard, South Bend, Indiana, Councilmanic District Number Six in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
Move to the passage of thirty-nine fifteen.
Second. Mr. Wardy.
Vice President Dieter.
Aye.
Mr. Furlic.
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis.
Aye.
Mrs. Shea.
Aye.
Dr. Furlic.
Aye.
Dr. Varna.
Aye.
President Tim Scott.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Sixty-seven fifteen.
Third reading on a bill of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending various sections of Chapter Six, Article One, Two, Four, Six, Seven, and Eleven, minimum permit fees and service charges of the building department.
Move to the passage of sixty-seven fifteen.
Second.
Mr. Furlic.
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis.
Aye.
Mrs. Shea.
Aye.
Dr. Furlic.
Aye.
Dr. Varna.
Aye.
Vice President Dieter.
Aye.
President Tim Scott.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Sixty-six fifteen.
Third reading on a bill of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, approving a resolution of the South Bend Economic Development Commission and establishing an economic development target area for Chase Tower and adjacent parking lot.
Move to the passage of sixty-six fifteen.
Second. Mr. Wardy.
Mr. Henry Davis.
Aye.
Mrs. Shea.
Aye.
Dr. Furlic.
Aye.
Dr. Varna.
Aye.
Vice President Dieter.
Aye.
Mr. Furlic.
Aye.
President Tim Scott.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Thank you. Resolutions. Mr. Wardy, fifteen ninety-five, please.
A resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend designating certain areas within the city of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as 211 West Washington Street, as an economic revitalization area for purposes of a 10-year real property tax abatement for apartments located at the Tower at Washington Square LLC.
Committee report.
Community investment met today, and we send this forward favorably.
Good. Mr. Fielding.
Good evening. Chris Fielding, Department of Community Investment, 14th floor of this building. Before you have the request for designated resolution, the tax, which is the fourth and final tax abatement for the Chase Tower, this is the portion that, as you remember, required the EDC resolution prior to bringing it forward because it's residential in nature. This is a part of the larger $31, $30.7 million project. They create 86 apartments above the retail and commercial space, which would be on the first floor and above the hotel. The total taxes during the 10-year period would be 1.69 million. Total taxes to be paid during that time would be 702,701. Total taxes to be abated during the period would be 988,000. Also, I want to remind you that this is under a special exception to the ordinance, number one, for the modified schedule for the abatement, and also for the modified time period allowed to complete the project within the O.A. Mark Neal is here, representing Washington Square. Do you have any questions?
Any questions right now? Mr. Davis.
Yeah. A question about an overall tax abatement, the tax abatement policy that we have in place. Do we, have we ever monitored, or do we look at the effect of a tax abatement as it relates to our schools? Is there any interference in ways that may switch or flip or change the tax structure that our schools receive more funding or less funding?
No. The tax abatement essentially is, it's kind of, it's a bit of a misnomer. Tax abatement is not an abatement moving back up. In 99% of the tax abatements that we do, this is not an abatement of current existing taxes. So it has no impact on any of the other shared taxing units. This is actually a phase-in of future taxes based on the investment that they would make. So it's such, if they invest a million dollars, the taxes are there to offset. So in this case, this would be a perfect example. If they invest approximately, about $17 million, using numbers, into the residential units, you can imagine that if they have 86 units, they're not going to be able to fill, I think they would love to, they're not going to fill all 86 apartments right when they open. But the taxes will immediately begin to generate on those units, so they'll automatically be a loss in revenue. So the taxes actually phase in on that $17 million that they invested. So there's no abatement of the current existing taxes on the building. They will pay those no matter what. It's an abatement of future taxes. So to answer your question, there's no effect on the other shared taxing units, including the school district, for taxes under the local ordinance.
Now, I asked that question for a reason. I'm not trying to catch you up. I'm not trying to pound you or something. But I think that it stands to reason that, I think that we probably need to look at that. I think that it does shift the burden somewhere else. I'm not necessarily very clear on where it actually falls out at, but I know our school corporation gets more of that tax dollar from the state than we do to operate. The reason why I'm asking that question and bringing that to the forefront is because I was out this past weekend or last week, and a resident asked me, would it be at the interest of the council in the coming years, or policymakers, should we put a line item in a tax abatement form so that one of these corporations, or just whomever seeking a tax abatement in our city, that they will be able to start donating money back to our schools, given our issues with the dollars being lessed in our schools, given the fact that if our schools are not operating well, we can't do well economically, growing economically? I thought it was a tremendous and wonderful idea. You know, I thought that was probably one of the best ideas I've ever heard. So as a way of, you know, thinking about that in the future years, I want to suggest that that becomes a part of the tax abatement form. Because some of the things on there can't be fulfilled. So we have a conversation about tilt computers, more technology. Because schools have only upgraded computers for like 10 years, right? So this may be an opportunity for us to help support the schools through our tax abatement. That's why I asked the question. So I'll be in contact with you real soon about that one. Because I think that has a lot of weight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Any other questions pertaining to fifteen ninety-five?
No.
Okay. I will. Mr. Neal. Can you give a brief synopsis, please?
Good evening, council residents. Mark Neal with Bradley Company, offices at 112 West Jefferson Boulevard, Suite 300 in South Bend. Petitioner comes before, looking for your favorable approval of this tax abatement for the fourth portion of the building. As you recall, the first three abatements covered both the hotel, the garage, and the retail on the ground and basement levels. The residential units, the apartment units, will be on floor seven, as well as on floors 17 through 25. The application indicates 86 units. The most recent design work has 85 units, as they've expanded the common area for the apartment units on the seventh floor. The expected investment is about $12.5 million to be completed in 2017 or possibly into 2018. Consequently, we requested the three-year rather than two-year exception for the abatement. Very excited about this fourth part of the project. It is the second phase, focusing first already, the work on the garage and the hotel has begun. Still expect the hotel to be delivered to hotel operators with the Aloft brand in the first quarter of 2017, with the apartments to follow after that. Be pleased to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody have any questions pertaining to fifteen ninety-five for Mr. Neal? No? Thank you. We'll open up to the public. Anybody wishing to speak in favor of fifteen ninety-five, please come to the podium. Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak against fifteen ninety-five, please come to the podium. Again, seeing none, we'll turn it back to council.
Motion to adopt.
Ninety-five, second.
Mr. Wardy.
Mrs. Shea.
Aye.
Dr. Furlic.
Aye.
Dr. Varna.
Aye.
Vice President Dieter.
Aye.
Mr. Furlic.
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis.
Aye.
And President Tim Scott.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Thank you. There are no first readings. We'll move to unfinished business. I'd like to make a motion to send Bill forty-seven fifteen, forty-eight fifteen, forty-nine fifteen, fifty fifteen, sixty-four fifteen to area plan.
No. Zoning and annexation.
Yeah, that's what I meant. Yep. Second. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Anything else under unfinished business at this time?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Really quick, all did receive the letter back from the mayor about the letter that I sent in reference to violence in the city. I have had a very eye-opening experience about issues that concern the city, and who it actually concerns, I've heard more so now than ever before, that the crime that is happening is like a black problem, basically, and the only reason why Henry is talking about it is because it affects the black community. I have an issue with that. I think all crime affects all people, no matter who's committing the crime or who's the victim of the crime. Regardless of what one opinion may be about the crime, crime is bad. We've had several shootings at one gas station, and I don't know, I guess if you want to get shot, you go to that gas station, Burntrend in Olive. And then you also have an issue with, past weekend, I went out to Tim Scott's district where that car was shot up, looked like a scene off of The Untouchables or The Godfather. Seriously, it did. And so, I'm saying all this to say this, I think that we need to have a serious conversation about how do we tackle crime. And I've never, I keep saying this, it's not necessarily that we have to add more police to stop it, because that may not necessarily be the answer to it. But what I am interested in having a conversation on is how do we intentionally bring economic results to areas that are subpar, or even worse? In case in point, that particular area that I was in, I think, what street was that?
Marquette?
Marquette.
In O'Brien.
In O'Brien. There was one street light over there, and that street light was covered by trees. So you imagine how dark it is during the nighttime. So, simple things to cure some ills in the area, many of those people over there were homeowners, believe it or not, have been there for years, decades, and they just never thought that their investment would return to them in this manner. So I think that there is a lot to be said about how we can go about changing the way that this thing is working out for us, because it's not getting better. We try to gain violent intervention, we think that was the best thing. Crime is going up, we've done ShotSpotter, all we do is hear about more shootings than before. So it's not like, you know, those things are taking away from the climate of violence in the city. I've offered several things in the past, but it takes more than me just offering these conclusions or these solutions. It has to take all of us. And so what I am doing is I'm not only charging the council with the responsibility to develop the conversation, but finding reasonable approaches that may be faith-based, that may be economically-based, it could be a mixture between the two, but being intentional about how we can change the way our environment is currently looking for our children. We've seen swimming pools being taken away from our children. We see how the schools are dealing with their finances and vouchers and, you know, scattered, children are scattering. We're talking about housing in the area being very bad. We're talking about food deserts. We're talking about all of these negative forces that we are aware of that are happening, unemployment. And for whatever reason, we seem like we're surprised when we have these type of shootings or these types of things happen. And so I'm not only surprised, I'm just sick of hearing about it. I think that we've done a hell of a job with failing some of, a lot of our kids, and I think that we have the opportunity right now to make some great ground right now. I think that it's an awesome opportunity to make some great ground. We've given close to $200,000 to Made Men over at Martin Luther King Center, which will help survive some of the jobs, some other things going on. That's awesome, right? But that's just one thing. So how do we begin to not only fund Candy Park? Awesome, but that's just one thing. So let's, I'm interested, helping public safety, whatever committee in the coming weeks, to have that conversation, because a lot of these things are happening even in the first district or the second district. And so, Tim, you have a shared interest with me on this, you should have, we all should have. But I don't think the effects are going to be quick, but I think that we need to start putting things in place to make them happen. And those are my, that's my two cents, so if we can begin to have committee hearings about it, I think it will be who was not to.
Okay. All right. Thank you, sir. Anything else under unfinished business? Seeing none, new business. Seeing none. Move to privilege of the floor. It's the point in the council meeting where the citizens can talk to the council. It cannot be on anything on the agenda tonight. You have three minutes. Mr. Dieter will time you and give you a one-minute exit. And privilege of the floor is limited to 30 minutes total. With that, please come up, state your name and address, and please.
Jesse Davis, P.O. Box 10, 205, South Bend, Indiana. I come to you tonight, we're getting close to elections, and three years ago roughly, I brought in some skeleton friends and asked them if you'd check his closet, clean out some of the skeletons. He got back to me and said he couldn't find any, only found socks and t-shirts in there. Well, transparency has been pretty much zero here in our city. There's been several big issues that have been brought up in the last three to four years, that we've never really gotten any answers to. We get letters, you know, "Oh, well, we got rid of a contractor." "Oh, so-and-so resigned." Phil St. Clair's son cleared out of the city cemetery building, and he's not using it anymore. But those aren't answers. The Catherine Roos patio, we convened a local grand jury, nobody was indicted. There was still wrongdoing. Somebody from the city allowed workers to go there with city trucks, city equipment, do work for her benefit on private property. Was anybody ever reprimanded for that? Who's going to make sure that the homeowners that were double-billed by a contractor that the city forced upon them for years gets paid and reimbursed for the money that was stolen from them? I brought that to the council, I took it to the police chief. The police chief said he wanted to handle the civil matter through the city. If that's the case, it should be the city's responsibility to make sure that these people are reimbursed. The city forced them to use this contractor. So I'm going to be short, I brought some skeletons tonight that I'm sure are hiding in Keith's closet now. So let's try and get some transparency, accountability, and some honest responses. I brought you eight issues that we've never got through with answers on. Also, one from February, where there was equipment returned to the city garage, large dollars' worth of equipment. Somebody covered a camera. I was told it went to a state police investigation in February. We're in October now. Nobody looked at the video and determined who brought the equipment back, what equipment was brought back? Come on, man. These are answers that we deserve, and we deserve real answers, not just kick it under the rug type answers.
Next, name and address.
Jason Benicki-Krichlow, 3822 West Ford Street in South Bend, Indiana. I know we have some difficult questions in front of us as a city. I know we've got some difficult times, and budget time is always a difficult process. And yet, as soon as the budget process is done, I read about us getting ready to spend about $9,000, $100,000 to purchase equipment for Dr. Rafat Ansari's next business project. And I hope we all take some time and really consider and think about where we're using our dollars when we do have school problems, when we do have violence problems. You know, just because the doctor, good doctor, allowed his name to be used for political purposes in the primary season, doesn't mean he should be being paid back with money after, you know, in July, he closed down his entire practice in South Bend, took all of his equipment, all of his doctors and all of that tax dollars with him to Mishawaka. We, as taxpayers, shouldn't be subsidizing his next business venture. If it's a good business venture, that's fine, then he should be already in position to fund that himself with him and his partners going forward. You know, we can't afford to subsidize every business person in the city when $900,000 could go a long way to solving a lot of problems for us. You know, we have a chronic homeless problem out there. You drive under bridges, under streets, and you see people sleeping in boxes and tents and in sleeping bags, and we're getting ready to come to the cold time of the year. You know, we have a very serious crime problem that we have no real solutions to, but $900,000 gives us a lot more resources. So I hope when we go through, we consider that, let's say, this time, we're not paying back this political favor, but instead, we're going to put the people of City of South Bend first. Thank you.
Thank you. Name and address, please.
Senator Brown, 222 East Navarre Street, City of South Bend, Virginia, Virginia, 94 Better Cover. As approved to council tonight, then I have five minutes. I have a couple items I'd like to talk, three, go and do it.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
I appreciate it, council. Number one, Mr. Davis, you have a good point. The reason that the areas that he's talking about is getting shot up and nothing is being done, that nobody promised lived in those areas. If that area was in the comments and there was going on, it'd be shut down overnight. So I feel sorry for the homeowners that live in those areas, hard-working people just trying to hang on to their homes and stuff, but it goes on the duff here. And I hope that we give behind Mr. Davis in this movement to try to make our city safe. I've been fighting a drug house at 229 Sadie Street. For some reason, that particular house is protected by somebody, because the word I hear is, they're working on something. But the drugs are still being sold out there, I'm going to have to take. And a homeowner that live over there with three small kids that can't ride their bike out in that particular area, I don't know what the answer is. But we're going to keep the fight up, trying to get a safe neighborhood. Number three, diamond on this, is that the council and the mayor of the city of South Bend, County Governor, a resolution to rename Candy Drive. We don't have no action on it. I sit on that board, we named that street, and the mayor's saying, send a resolution of his people to the council, and we, every day, sit silently and get no action on that. So I don't know if it's just a tactic to let this just pass by and be dropped, but it won't be dropped. We're going to keep fighting, like we fight for safe neighborhoods, and we're going to go on. And I wish that the council would contact the mayor of the city and find out why we can't meet and get a resolution on this, as far as remaming the street, like we can't get the crime out of the street. Every night over there on that west side, in the second district, there's a shooting gun. And we shouldn't have to live like that. You know, we don't have a lot of money over there, so I guess we have to have people with money to give some safety over there. I appreciate you giving me the time to talk here. We need your help as usual. I hope it ain't falling on deaf ears, and you're the only one we can talk to about our problems. Thank you.
We have a few minutes left if you want to talk. You good?
I'm going to let it spit for itself.
Got you. Next, name and address, please.
John Schaefer, 402 Bison Ridge, Nappany, Indiana. A few weeks ago, we rented the state marquee in downtown South Bend to send a message to the mayor, to the city itself, and to the, including the common council. That message was, we wanted a bed for every homeless. First Lady Michelle Obama earlier this year created the Mayor's Challenge. And that challenge was to encourage mayors to take action to end homelessness with the emphasis on ending veteran homelessness. The mayor of South Bend has challenged to pull together all resources with the community, including the nonprofits, agencies, shelters, churches, in an effort to collaborate together to end homelessness in the city. The winter is soon approaching us, and during extreme weather, a few warming stations will open, but most will close at 9:00 p.m., turning the homeless out into the code at the worst possible time of the day. We feel a 24-hour warming station needs to be established during such extreme weather. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, make a motion or entertain a motion for adjournment.
I move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Good.
I'd be interested in seeing your rating. I bet it's good.
Oh, yeah, you got to join, I'm not going to join in.
It's a strange, uh...
So I don't understand why there would be a mystery there, especially through a tax abatement. It makes sense to me. It seemed like it's a win.